Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our commission meeting. And here's our chair personally.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The record shows that we call this regular commission meeting.
Gotcha. We'll start at the top of the agenda with the invocation. I believe it's being brought to us by Commissioner Welch. Okay. All right. Darren Box from Wildwood Church will be giving some invocation. Everybody, please rise, please.
I want to thank the commissioners. First of all, I want to thank you for your service. God bless you. May we pray. Oh, Lord, our God, you invite us to come to you in prayer. You tell us to bring our request to you. And we know that you not only hear us, but that you act on our behalf out of your love for us. And so now, Lord, we lift up the people of this county. We ask that so far as can be provided for them all first, for safety, for their lives and for the lives of their families. And we ask, we ask for fair and equitable governance. And we ask, Lord, too, that for our county, your blessings and grace would fall upon us generously, that there would be a spirit of brotherhood, charity, and opportunity for flourishing as a community by your hand. We also pray that for our commissioners today, we pray that they would have a renewed spirit of cooperation and collegiality. We pray that there would be no divisiveness or resentments as they deliberate those issues that come before them. And we pray for your wisdom and guidance and even a spirit of joy as they serve this their community. Now we pray all these things in the name of the one who gives us access to the throne of grace, the one through whom we have a sure and certain hope, the name Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
I'll be led in pledge by Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Welch?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We'll start at the top of our agenda with awards and presentations. I'm going to do, I'll tell you what, if I can, I'm going to do something slightly different here. We'll go out of order and ask that we present the Refire Culinary Program Proclamation first. So Commissioner O'Keefe?
All right. Can everybody hear me? Excellent. I will say I'm very excited about this. I first learned of Refire in 2017 on one of my first dates with my now-wife, who invited me to a discussion panel on the challenges of reentry from people leaving the criminal justice system. Representing this proclamation, whereas Refire Culinary Institute was established in 2017 as a training and social services program to aid those citizens involved with the criminal justice system, and whereas Refire Culinary Center is committed to providing training, resources, and support to the community through education, a specially-trained hospitality workforce, and lower recidivism rates, and whereas Refire Culinary has graduated over 70 individuals since 2017 of varied ages and backgrounds, and whereas a successful return to society post-incarceration is often riddled with low to no employment, compromised education, and repeat offenses, Refire Culinary Center celebrates an employment of over 90% of their graduates and a recidivism rate of less than 10% for graduates. Whereas Refire Culinary also serves the community through partnerships with other reentry programs, halfway houses, and family emergency shelters to ensure those most underserved in our community have access to healthy meals and employment training. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we celebrate and honor Refire Culinary for its community leadership and commitment to empowering returning citizens to become fully actualized and successful members of their community through meaningful work trajectories, positive social engagement, positive relationships, and healthy thinking patterns, all while contributing to a more robust workforce dated this 11th day of July 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You want to take a picture and then together, and then you hear it. And then I don't want to let you off the hook, actually. We are going to hear from Rebecca Kelly Manders, who instituted this program, and from one of the graduates, because this is such an important thing and such an incredible success for such a challenge in our community. Actually, I'm going to throw, this is only my second proclamation, which makes you my favorite. Why don't you go ahead and speak first, and then we'll do pictures.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rebecca Kelly Manders. I'm the founder, director, instructor, and head dishwasher for the Refire Culinary Program. I've met a lot of people in this room. Good to see you, Commissioner Maddox. And I just want to say thank you to the commissioners for recognizing the work that Refire does. I want to thank the Refire team, Arthur, who you're going to hear from in just a second, and Liz, who is our reentry and outreach specialist. The three of us work really, really hard to make sure that the program keeps moving and that all of our students and graduates get everything that they need to successfully reenter. When I had this idea in 2015, I didn't think that it was going to turn out the way that it has, but I don't think I would change anything about what Refire is and what Refire does. Refire is an eight-week training program for anyone with a felony conviction that's not sexual in nature. We teach you basic culinary skills. We get you certified in food safety and sanitation. We make sure that you have the resources to get employed. We make sure that you feel empowered to get that employment. And I have graduates from 2018, from my 2017 class, all the way up to today. In fact, I had two, two graduates come by and see me today, just to stop in and say, hey, chef, things are going great. I'm going to come back and see you next week, and we're going to catch up. I can't put a, I can't put a price tag on that kind of stuff. And to know that what we're doing is empowering people in our community and helping people in our community is the best gift. But this proclamation is, is really awesome to just know that we're seen and what our work is doing is being seen. So we're really grateful for that. So thank you. And I'm going to let Arthur, Arthur Watts, speak for just a second, one of our graduates from last year.
Hi, I'm Arthur Watts. Like she said, I graduated last year, and now I'm working for Chef as her kitchen assistant. I'm also the cook. And so I feel like Refire is a lot more than just cooking. It's learning social skills and stuff, learning how to work with other people, because sometimes people are hard to work with. So it's, you learn a lot more than just cooking in her class. I feel like it's also one of the best things that have happened to me since I've been out. Today is actually exactly one year since I've been out of prison. And yes. So it sort of opens up the future for me for a lot of other things, and I hope to be a chef myself someday. So, yeah.
Now we'll do a picture.
If I can, Commissioner, most of y'all, if you don't know it already, will find out today because it's a press release that's been circulating. But I just took over as CEO of Family Promise of the Big Ben, which is formerly the Big Ben Homeless Coalition. And the first person I had a chance to meet in our staff meeting was Rebecca. And one thing I can say about her is that she's very passionate about what she's doing. I'm so, so excited about Refire and what it's doing on the campus of Hope Community and what it'll continue to do. And young man, congratulations, not just on, on your one year, but on, on creating a path forward for yourself that we're sure that that one year will be five years soon to come. So Rebecca, thank you so much for everything you do, not just for the whole community, but for this community and for what Refire does for reentry itself. Thank you. Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just want to also congratulate Refire for just having the heart and the dedication to reach out to those that really need some support in transitioning back into, into society. And I've had the opportunity to experience some of their good culinary treats. So not only do they do a great job in training, but they also do a great job in providing services through various receptions and what have you. So just thank you. Congratulations to you. And just continue to reach out to those that are less fortunate, those that need help along the way, those that have been incarcerated and they need some transitional support to get back into society. Congratulations, young man, for your one year, and just keep up the good work.
Thank you. I want to take the opportunity to recognize only commissioners with two terms and a 10-year pen. Commissioner Mary Ann Lindley is here with us today. As you guys know, she's one of my favorites. Thank you so much for joining us today. All right. Now I will start with the proclamation. Well, actually, can I save that for last? Would that get me in trouble? With the Neighborhood of the Year Awards, folks, can I save you for last? This is just, no, y'all looking at me like, no, don't do that. Is that okay? I got two more proclamations. I just, I just think you're special, won't you last? All right, great. So I'm going to go to a proclamation recognizing Princess Osley and Elite Business Solutions LLC for being named number one of the Southeast Region's fastest-growing companies by Inc. Magazine. So if Princess and her staff can join me at the podium.
Mr. Chairman, while you're approaching that podium, I wanted, and I know you desire to extend courtesy and recognition to Commissioner Maury Turnbull, who's also in audience with us this afternoon. Commissioner.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Proctor. She knows she's one of my favorites, too. All right.
I knew it was going to be in the bind on that one.
Oh, Commissioner, you have no idea. All right. Proclamation reads, whereas Elite Business Strategies LLC is a minority-woman-owned and-operated professional services consulting firm established in 2011 by Princess Osley, president and CEO. And whereas Elite Business Strategies specializes in the organization and management of the consequences, resources, and responsibilities of dealing with all aspects of emergency resolutions that affect the people in a given community with the goal of maximizing preparation, response, and recovery from the harmful effects. And whereas Inc. Magazine is a New York-based business magazine best known for its annual ranking of the fastest-growing privately-held companies in the United States called the Inc. 500 and Inc. 5000. Schoolboy Member Jones, you come up here, too, as our MWBE. As you know, Princess was also MWBE of the Year not too long ago, so I'm proud to acknowledge them on that, on that front, too. Whereas the Inc. 5000 Regional Southeast List, born of the annual Inc. 5000 franchise, is the most prestigious ranking of the fastest-growing private companies within the Southeast Region. And whereas the companies on the list show a remarkable rate of growth across all industries in the Southeast Region with an average growth rate of 673% between 2019 and 2022. And in 2022 alone, they added 25,844 jobs and nearly $7 billion to the Southeast Region economy. And whereas Elite Business Strategies was listed number five on the 2023 Inc. 5000 Regional Southeast List. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners in Leon County that we recognize Elite Business Strategies and its CEO, President, Princess Osley, for its award-winning performance, exceptional growth, and major economic impact to not only Leon County and Sea of Tallahassee area, but to the entire Southeast Region. It's signed by myself, attested to by the county administrators, and also signed by the rest of the commissioners. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's our proclamation. Want to speak?
Good afternoon. I am incredibly grateful for the community that helped, that Elite Business Strategies was birthed in. It is because of the nurturing, the support. I see so many commissioners that I can give personal testament where you have been impactful to the business and the growth of Elite Business Strategies. And so I thank you for your support. I thank you to my community. This is the place that raised me from my beginnings at Florida A&amp;M University. I see my former professor, Mr. Professor Proctor, to, to those who have been in the community that have supported us, whether it's by purchasing our products or seeking after our services. We thank you. We look forward to continuing our growth and continuing to build and bring jobs back here in the community. And we thank you so much for supporting us throughout the 12 years we've been in business here. Thank you.
We'll take, we'll take the phone on in a moment, but if you, if you might notice, the years of 19, between 19 and 2022 were the years of COVID. I want everyone to also understand that Elite Business Strategies was our principal firm that provided us with our COVID materials that allowed our, our employees to do the job that they did during COVID. So want to give you recognition for that as well. Take a picture?
You heard her say she had a very good professor, and I'm just saying what I'm saying.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to congratulate the business and just say how proud we are to have such a prestigious, successful business here in Leon County. And it just, it demonstrates to us that we need to do more to nurture our young people. We need to do more to make sure we can keep that talent right here in Leon County. So congratulations, you guys have done tremendous work, and we certainly wish you much success in the future. So thanks again.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Next, I'll present a proclamation to the Big Ben Minority Chamber of Commerce on its celebration of 10 years, I believe its founder and chair, Mr. Sean Pittman is here. All right. Proclamation reads, whereas the Big Ben Minority Chamber of Commerce, BBMC, was founded in November of 2012, and whereas the BBMC was created out of a need bringing, to bring attention and support to women-owned and minority-owned businesses in the five-county region of the Big Ben, which include Leon, Gaston, Waculla, Franklin, and Jefferson. And whereas the Big Ben Minority Chamber seeks to strengthen and infuse the local economy and entrepreneurial ecosystem by providing the support needed to empower, stimulate, grow, and sustain business enterprises owned and operated by women and minorities by, by filling in the gaps and opportunities for these targeted groups through a comprehensive menu of programs and services. A lot of big words in there. And whereas the BBMC Board of Directors and professional staff work aggressively to build and sustain relationships in business and industry, in business and industry at the local, regional, and national levels in an effort to expand and strengthen the network of support for entrepreneurs, small business owners, and the targeted population the organization seeks to serve. And whereas in innumerable, innumerable, local women, women, and minority-owned businesses have benefited from the mentorship, networking opportunities, training, workshops, and other services provided by the BBMC, ultimately growing and thriving at rates they may otherwise not have been able to achieve. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that it, that we recognize the 10-year anniversary of the Big Ben Minority Chamber of Commerce and further acknowledge the vital role it plays in the startup, maintenance, and growth of women and minority-owned businesses in the Big Ben region. This is signed by myself, attested to by the county administrators, and as well as signed by the rest of the commission. And let me say along with that, that probably about three or four years ago, the Big Ben Minority Chamber came to us all and presented us with a 10-point plan where they worked with other chambers, the capital city chamber in town, to hold workshops and start to even press on some, press on us a little bit to, to help us up our game when it comes to the way that we are dealing with our minority businesses, along with the efforts of our, of our MWBE office. And this board took the challenge. But I would like to say for the community that it didn't start with this board, it started with, with Big Ben Minority Chamber having a vision and pushing us and bringing it to us and having trust that we wouldn't just read the document, but that we would implement the document. So I wanted to thank Mr. Pittman, Attorney Pittman, and the Big Ben Minority Chamber for trusting us with that 10-point plan. And I want to thank the board, as well as the city and blueprint, for taking that, that plan and implementing it. I believe that we're on our way to completing, if not all of them, most of what's on that list. So thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Thank you all very much. This is 10 years is a long time. And when you think of most organizations, a lot of organizations don't survive past two or three-year timeframe, it tells you that something special is happening. And in this case, it was a void in our community that needed to be met in bringing our minority and women-owned businesses together to do like, not just business things, but community things. We believe they, they go together. And when good people get behind those causes, good people like all of you who I've seen at many of our events, and we appreciate that very much, your presence, so important. But when good people come together to do important things, all kind of amazing things can happen. We want to thank, we have great members like Princess, who you just awarded, thanked, congratulated. It's members like, like her business and her team that come together with us to try to do amazing things. It's board members, we have some incredible board members who show up all the time to do incredible things. Former board members like Keith Bowers, Daryl Jones. We keep losing our board members to you, but that's a great thing and says a lot about what we're trying to do. I'll end with this, I'll end with where we began. If we take the time to help a business that may have one or two people working for it, that may or may not know how to put a plan together, may or may not know how to stretch beyond their walls, may or may, may not know that there's government entities that could use their talent, but if we stop for a moment and show them and help them, we help build our entire ecosystem. That business with one or two people becomes a business with two or three, or maybe five, right? And we don't leave that 30% behind. We pull them with us, and that helps everybody. That's what the Big Ben Minority Chamber is all about. So on behalf of our president, Antonio Jefferson, and our leadership team led by Larice Thomas, Dana Dudley, who is the master of everything with, with Big Ben Minority Chamber, Mr. Chairman, thank you all.
How'd he get it? What?
I don't know. I think it started with wow. Wow. All right. You know, Christine Henry is behind me. I didn't mention her, but the chair of our Women's Business Council. And by the way, we've been chasing the Women's Business Council, Mr. Proctor, for a long time. I don't mean in a bad way. I mean, I mean, that without them, yeah, yeah. I mean, that, that they were so far ahead of the, ahead of the curve in what needed to be done in this community, we found ourselves working harder because they were working so incredibly hard. So Christine, thank you for everything that you do.
Amen, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd be remiss if I didn't also congratulate Attorney Sean Pittman. Thank him for his innovation, thank him for his concern about women and minority-owned businesses, and just to let him know that my business, my woman minority-owned business was certainly impacted by the chamber. And I know he will continue to, to do the good work that they are doing, congratulate his board, but I believe this recognition is very well deserved. So thank you again, Mr. Pittman and the chamber.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right, now to the, oh, my assistant, my banner, appreciate it. Neighborhood Awards, that's on, that's next up in the agenda. This afternoon, I have the honor of presenting the 2023 Leon County Neighborhood, the Neighborhood of the Year Awards. For the 42nd year in a row, I'm 42, yeah. For the 42nd year in a row, the program judged in partnership with the Council on Neighborhood Associations, or Kona, celebrates our, our community's outstanding neighborhood places and people that make our community, our entire Leon County such a great place to live, work, and play. Before I reveal this year's winners, I want to invite Christine Henry from Kona to the podium to give a few remarks. Christine?
Forty-two years. I just got here. I was 12 when I started. First of all, I want to give due recognition to Ms. Turnbull, who is a former Kona president of our organization, along with many of our community stewards who were advocates way before I was at Tallahassee Community College, when they felt a voice for neighborhood associations should be birthed. In 1981, that voice was birthed. And so we have the opportunity to work in partnership with the county to continue this program, this necessary program for neighborhoods to be recognized, but not just neighborhoods, neighborhood folk, because there is no neighborhood advocacy without neighborhood folk. All right? And so that is what this award process is about. It's about the people that own the homes and the spaces of value that we value. And so today, I am very pleased to be here with our county, our county partners, and also our president is here as well, Mr. Leroy Peck, who zoomed over here as soon as I said, hey, we got the county today. So I look forward to today. So I look forward today to assisting and being on hand. Some of the folks I see over here have been neighborhood advocates for their neighborhood for a very long time, so we got to talk about succession in some way or form. But we are very pleased that people value their communities in this way. So with that being said, thank you very much to Leon County for the partnership and the preservation of this very important process.
All right. Thank you, Christine. I was supposed to, if there are award winners are here, could you please stand for a moment, please? Award winners? Award winner? Huh? Yeah, could you please stand? Just stand and be recognized for a second, so everybody can clap for you. There we go. There we go. Let's give them a hand, everybody. All right, all right. I have a little snack for you there. Thank you, Christine, both the Kona commitment to our great community and this important partnership. Now, here we go. Let's recognize the four community award winners. Okay, got it. So Small Neighborhood of the Year. This year, Small Neighborhood of the Year maintains the beauty of their neighborhood by keeping their yards tidy and picking up trash in the streets. They also got Leon-ready this hurricane season by trimming and removing trees before a storm hits to reduce the storm damage and keep their neighborhood safe. I'm proud to present this year's award to the Kinsale Unit One Homeowners Association. Let's give the man. All right, next up, Large Neighborhood of the Year. This year's Large Neighborhood of the Year has an active social committee that plans neighborhood events to bring the community together. They also, they are also dedicated to giving back to the wider Leon County community by volunteering for the Master Gardener Program with IFAS, Leon County Extension Office, Meals on Wheels, and our very own annual operation, Thank You Veterans Day Breakfast. This year's Large Neighborhood of the Year goes to Lafayette Oaks Homeowners Association. The Unincorporated Neighborhood of the Year. This year's Unincorporated Neighborhood of the Year is a community that works together to support one another by collecting donations for the elder, the elderly, and hosting events to bring everyone together, and a summer kickoff celebration and a Christmas party. I want to be invited to the Christmas party next year. Congratulations. Okay, all right. I'm holding you to that. Congratulations to Land Over Heels Homeowners Association. Let's give them a hand. The Neighbor of the Year Award. And finally, our Neighbor of the Year, congratulations Irene Goodner. Irene is a dedicated and caring community member who was nominated for this year's award by her neighbor Judy Davison. Irene, who is a hospice nurse and loves working with people, routinely checks in on her elderly neighbors and walks their dogs. This past year, Irene organized the first Delwood Drive Pig Roast to bring the neighborhood together for a day of food, fun, and conversation. Irene embraces diversity and makes everyone in the neighborhood feel welcome and included. Let's give Irene a hand. Congratulations. That is really cool. That's really cool. All right, now, a huge thank you to all of our year's winners and for everything you do to build our community. We look forward to another exciting year of Leon County Neighborhoods. Now, let's take one group picture up at the podium. Commissioners, do you want to get involved in the picture? I'll tell you what, won't everybody come up to the diocese? All right, commissioners, we got pig roast to go to, and Christmas parties, and all kinds of stuff. We'll eat good next year. All right. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I just want to congratulate.
Be quiet.
I know. I have to say this. I have to say. I want to congratulate all of the neighborhoods, the small neighborhoods, the large neighborhoods. I want to congratulate Ms. Goodman on being Neighbor of the Year. Ms. Henry, Christine Henry, and Mr. Peck, you guys do a tremendous job of keeping our neighborhoods safe, our neighborhoods cleaned. And I just have to acknowledge that Lafayette Oaks, you heard it last year, you heard it last year, but Lafayette Oaks is my neighborhood of 30 years. So we congratulate our president and all the individuals in the neighborhood that work to keep it safe, as well as all of our Neighborhoods Commissioner Proctor. So collectively, thank you all for all you do. Law enforcement can't do it by themselves. We appreciate you all just working together, and we all feel safer because of our neighborhood volunteers. So thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we could suffer that because it's a poor frog that won't croak over his own pond. So yes, congratulations.
I got to say, this is the first time I've ever seen a mint thrown across the diocese.
You know, it just slipped, Mr. Chair. I just, I was just trying to.
And the thing was, it landed so perfectly. You could have played basketball.
I am a quarterback, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so we move now to citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Again, during this time of citizens to be heard, we will hear from the citizens, but the citizens will not hear from us commissioners, so we'll just hear from them. So do we have any citizens to be heard on non-agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we have one speaker joining us by Zoom in the queue at this time to be heard on non-agenda items, Margaret Moore.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Moore, if you could, name and address for record, please, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you. Ms. Moore, you there?
My name is Margaret Moore. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Hi there. My name is Margaret Moore. I live at 1910 Montessoro Drive. And I'm looking here.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm on a delay, I believe. I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank you all for keeping the virtual option an option for those of us who can't attend in person, but who appreciate the opportunity to participate. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you so much. Any more speakers?
No.
Thank you. We'll move now to the consent agenda. Are there any items pulled off consent, Mr. Administrator?
There are none.
Seeing none, is there a motion for consent? This has been moved by Commissioner Minor, seconded by the vice chair. Any objection? Seeing none. Oh, you know what? Before we go there, I stopped myself, that doesn't count. If I could ask you to rescind your motion, please? Thank you. Commissioner Command is participating on my phone telephonically. We need a vote to allow him to participate in the meeting. Is there a vote for Commissioner? Moved by the vice chair or second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Proctor. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Command, are you there?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move to consent. Motion made by Commissioner Minor, seconded by the vice chair. Any objection? Seeing none, so it is approved unanimously. We'll move now to, nothing was pulled. General Business Item Number 14, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the first item on your general business agenda seeks the board's approval of the 2023 Legislative Final Report and to schedule a workshop for the 2004 State and Federal Legislative Priorities Workshop in October. The report before you, Commissioner, provides an extensive summary of the significant legislation that the county's been tracking at the state and federal level. Of course, we continue to keep you updated on our progress throughout session, through our weekly Capitol update newsletter. Our very able staff, point person Nikki Payton, is here and available to make a brief presentation or answer any questions that you should have. And I should also note that our very hardworking and capable lobbying team in the Capitol Alliance Group has joined us here today as well, and I'm sure that they would be available to answer any questions as well. With that, commissioners, we are recommending options one and two, and I have no speakers on this item.
All right, commissioners, we've already agenda item. Is there a motion or is there any questions? If not, is there a motion for staff recommendation on item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment on this item.
Yes, sir, please.
For good of the order, I continue to be one commissioner who believes that it's not premature for our body to embrace the notion of payment in lieu of. It's not novel. We would be setting no particular precedence, but to me, year after year, Sharkey, y'all's team have heard me, Leon County is the capital. We have a significant amount of property occupied by the state, and if of our property is occupied by the federal government, it's unclear to me why that need is so large and part of our federal government, but we receive nothing in return. And I think, commissioners, that I'm hopeful that next year, we can seek something intelligent to designate our capital county for fee in lieu of, for the services we render to the state. And I think that the national model would be Washington DC, which because of the unique sacrifices of citizens who live in the District of Columbia, the federal government knows it occupies so much, and it also leans upon its EMS and its police and cleanup streets, all of that. It's that concept that Washington DC receives federal allotments because of what it incurs. Likewise, Tallahassee and Leon County, we do the same. And I'd like to see us next year push to concretize and ask and make it, no matter how many years it takes, let's just start asking for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Any other speakers? Seeing none, is there a motion for staff recommendation? Which is options number one and two? Moved by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Welch. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll go now to item number 15, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. As you've already seen by this agenda, there are several items here that are sort of end of the fiscal year items. This is one of them. This item, item number 15, seeks the board's approval of the 2024 CHSP Grant Recommendations to Agencies, as you'll see here in the amount of over $2.2 million. The item also seeks your approval and in response to recent requests by the board, recent direction by the board to schedule a workshop on human services in preparation for the next two-year funding cycle for the CHSP process for November 28th at 1:00 PM. Commissioners, with that, I have no speakers on this item, and staff is recommending options one, two, and three.
Commissioners, what I would like to do if I can is I would recuse myself from the, for the obvious reasons, from the portion dealing specifically with homelessness. And so if I could entertain a motion of options one through three, taking out that portion, and then a motion I would recuse myself from, for the option for the homelessness category itself. Motion made by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Proctor, do you want to speak now or after the motion?
What is the motion?
The motion is for options one through three. We're taking out the portion, speaking of funding, speaking specifically to homelessness, as I will ask for a motion on that next and recuse myself from that.
Okay. I am grateful to see option three listed there, and it gives us that opportunity which we requested a few meetings ago, a couple of meetings ago. So we said that we would look at designating 1% of the total county's budget to human services, and we were apprised later that already we more than commit 1% to human services. We did ask, and it's in option three, that we would have a look at, do a workshop, the tentacles of human services, the channels, the networks, the matrix, these of how it all blends together. So I'm really, really, really excited, and I hope that we give ourselves, it's scheduled for 1:00, but events, if you see that we need more time, this is just an area that I'm looking at, the Alice Report, that I just had a copy of the Alice Report, you all have seen it. There are strong reasons why, if we need more than two hours, the Alice Report is telling us here, talking about, that we may need more than two hours. I'm open if we need more than two hours, but this document that we have fresh is a strong reason why we should adopt option three, so I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Options one through three is moved by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Minor, removing a portion, speaking specifically to homelessness. All those in favor of the option?
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Command?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am in a similar situation as you. I am going to recuse myself from the Children's Home Society portion of this motion. I am the current vice chair of the Local Advisory Board for the Children's Home Society, and they are receiving funding in this item. So I may defer to the county attorney.
Commissioner Command, are you a paid member of that board?
I am not.
If you are not a paid member, then?
It's not an actual conflict. He is recusing for the perception of a conflict, given his position as an officer under 286.012.
So you're accusing yourself for the perception of a conflict?
Right.
And that is allowed? All right. All those in favor of the motion or opposed by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 601 with Commissioner Command recusing himself. Now, if we can have a motion, am I allowed to share that, this motion? Do I need to pass the gavel?
You can share, you just can't make the gavel.
Right. Can we have a motion for the category, speaking to homelessness and CHSP funding specifically?
Move.
Moved by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by the vice chair. I would be recusing myself from the vote as I stated earlier, as employee of Family Promise of the Big Ben. Any speakers? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion or opposed by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 601 with myself recusing for conflict. We'll move now to item number 16, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 16, Commissioners, seeks the board's approval for SHIP funding and our annual allocation, our 2024 annual allocation of the county's housing program funding. Commissioners, our SHIP funding, again, is the county's primary funding mechanism for all of our affordable housing programs, from down payment assistance to emergency home repairs, home rehabilitation for low-income households. And as recommended by the state, we also are seeking to clarify eligibility for homeownership, the homeownership development program. As such, commissioners, we are recommending options one and two, and we have no speakers on this item.
Is there a motion for options one and two? So moved by Commissioner Proctor, or second?
I second.
Seconded by the vice chair. I have no speakers in queue. All those in favor of the motion or opposed by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
But, Mrs. Chair, I apologize. I didn't press the request to speak, but I would just like to briefly say, I'm very excited that the funding for next year of Mr. County Administrator is double. I understand the last five years, we've averaged a little over $300,000. But for next year, we will have over $1 million in funding, and I think that will go a long way in addressing affordable housing. affordable housing in, you know, in our county, as well as addressing some of the rehab housing that we do. So I'm excited that, from the county standpoint, that we can do, do a lot more, and I hope it continues to increase in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
In queue, motion carries without objection. We'll go to item number 17, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the item before you seeks Board acceptance of a safety evaluation report on Dempsey-Mayo Road, which includes recommendations to slow down vehicular traffic and to enhance the visibility of pedestrians at roadway crossings. Staff has been working, as I know many of the Commissioners are aware, with residents of Westminster Oaks who have been focused on roadway and pedestrian safety issues. They're supportive of the recommendations before you. As described in more detail on this item, the recommendations will require the Board to waive the county's traffic calming policy and authorize traffic calming enhancements along Dempsey-Mayo Road in the form of these three raised pedestrian crossings. If approved by the Board, Dempsey-Mayo crosswalks will be improved within the next 60 days, which will also allow the county to partner with Westminster Oaks and KCCI to decorate two of these crosswalks with artwork designated by local artists as a part of their Crosswalks to Classrooms project. With that, Commissioners, I have no speakers on this item, and we are recommending options one through four.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one and two. Thank you, one and two.
Thank you. Those here representing Westminster Oaks, please stand here today. I want to understand, they always come to us, and they're always very willing to work with us with things, with concerns they have out there, whether it be traffic or storm water or whatever. And I want, again, just like I thanked earlier, I want to thank you for trusting us and working with us, because what I can say about Westminster Oaks and those folks, and I hear a lot from our former Commissioner Turnbull, is that, you know, they have a lot of asks, but they understand what we can and cannot do, and they're always willing to compromise and meet in the middle, and that means a lot. I understand that we can't always do everything, but there are some things that we can do, and we strive to do those things. So thank you so much. I want to recognize Commissioner Welch and Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For prior to my comments, I'd like to make a motion for staff recommendation, options one and two.
Option one and two has been moved by Commissioner Welch, seconded by the Vice Chair. Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to encourage your support for this item. I know a lot of us have had conversations with the folks at Westminster Oaks who have been really diligent and put together a really good presentation on the needs for some safety improvements along Dempsey-Mayo. As I was discussing with Commissioner Proctor, WT Moore Elementary School is right there on Dempsey-Mayo Road, and so with the future expansion of Dempsey-Mayo across the Waloney property and a roundabout going in right there at Mikasuki, you're going to continue to see more and more traffic. Dempsey-Mayo is kind of like the gateway connector between District Five and District Four, and it's, of course, right around the corner from Commissioner Cummings, Madam Vice Chair's Neighborhood of the Year, and Westminster Oaks has probably won some Neighborhoods of the Year awards in its history, I'm sure. It's a wonderful neighborhood, full of really great folks, and I think that this is a really smart expenditure on our behalf to try and slow some of that traffic down. I know that, as somebody who lives up Central Road, I take Dempsey-Mayo when I'm on my way to Costco, and so a lot of folks are cutting through between Mikasuki, and I expect that that traffic will only increase as we run Dempsey-Mayo across Waloney. And so the four raised crosswalks, I think is a step in the right direction. I think KCCI's involvement obviously is great when we beautify these crosswalks, and so with Westminster Oaks and WT Moore right there, I think this is a really good item. And I want to thank our staff for putting in a lot of effort to work with the folks, to the chairman's point. Westminster Oaks is, they're very good advocates for their needs in that community, and I know they've reached out to a lot of us, and they do a really good job, a very thorough job, and are extremely willing to compromise and understand limitations of what we can and can't do, and I think this is a great item. So I would encourage your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo Commissioner Welch's statements. This is another great example of looking forward to future development that we know is going to happen and tackling pedestrian and non-vehicle safety ahead of time, and I'm just, I'm really excited to see this, especially knowing that we're going to have much more development just north of where this is happening. And, you know, as someone who is looking forward to hopefully seeing more and more kids walk or bike to school, this also provides a very safe way to do that, so I'm excited to see this.
All right, Madam Vice Chair.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly support this particular initiative as well. I want to thank Commissioner Margaret Turnbull and the staff and the Board at Westminster Oaks for reaching out. Me and my Chief of Staff visited there, heard the concerns, given colorful handouts. And I just appreciate Commissioner Turnbull's advocacy in this regard, because we are looking at the safety of two of our most precious citizenry categories, and that's our senior citizens and our children, our elementary children, which WT Moore is right adjacent to Westminster. So in that regard, I accept the staff's recommendation. I appreciate the camaraderie that we, the county has shared with Westminster Oaks, and I look forward to the fact that if this is approved, I understand that this could become a reality by September of this year, I believe, Mr. County Administrator. So I think it's a win-win for all concerned. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, I was just curious, certainly I support this measure as well, given the benefits that this could do to enhance safety for Leon County Public School, WT Moore. What role and what cost will the school board share in this improvement for the enhancement of its school? Is there any involvement, a shared experience in the cost?
Mr. Administrator? There is not. These enhancements are solely within the right-of-way of the roadway.
So I've looked at the easements that have occurred down through the years, and we've got easements established almost 20 years ago that, you know, this is sort of late, seemingly. It's surprising that the school board has not made this ask. Indeed, my son Jordan attended that school, Haley attended that school, and I know personally in first hand, conditions of morning and afternoon. And as you go through this information, it's difficult to think that this has not occurred previously. But it is a benefit for the school district. And while we have no objections to writing this check, it just seems that a big entity like that, that gets more traffic than Westminster Oaks does, that it should have been a shared of, and there may be other locales, which is ripe for us to do as well. But driving the train for this ask has been Westminster Oaks private and not the public venue of the school district. But there are probably other areas of our community that could afford some looking at, in particular where, as Commissioner Turnbull said on the news yesterday, you had both the younger generation and the not as young generation at both ends of the spectrum. So that was an amazing look, but I think that it's something worth our pairing with school board to look at areas that we can slow traffic down with these raised situations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, any other speakers? I see none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 70. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am. All right, item number 18, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks your authorization to schedule the first and only public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance creating a formal process for the application review of requests for golf cart operations on county roadways and multi-use paths. Last year, Commissioners, you may recall that the Board authorized staff to develop an ordinance to create a process for the application and review of such requests. Florida statutes govern the process for local governments to consider and determine whether golf carts may be, may safely travel on public roadways and multi-use paths. Further, the application and approval requirements differ under Florida statutes for requests related to golf cart operations on roadways versus multi-use paths. Obviously, we go into that in some detail in the analysis, and of course, I've covered that in my briefings with you all. The draft ordinance proposes a formal application process for new subdivisions as well as existing neighborhoods, seeking to operate golf carts on county infrastructure. The roadway or multi-use path request, staff will verify the request is eligible for further evaluation, and if so, the applicant will hire a professional engineer to conduct a traffic study to determine if golf carts, again, may safely travel on the requested segments of roadway or if golf carts may safely share a multi-use path with bicycles and pedestrians. The result of the study, Commissioners, must be certified by a professional engineer, and for roadway requests, the county engineer will review the study to verify that the findings support the use of golf carts and approve such applications. Should the study support golf cart operations on a multi-use path, as I mentioned, Commissioners, Florida statutes require consultation with FDOT and the Board's adoption, so in those cases, I'd be coming back to the Board for your adoption of an ordinance to designate location-specific multi-use paths for use by golf carts. Wanted to just go into a little bit of an explanation there on that, Commissioners. The draft ordinance provides two ways to initiate the application review process for requests within a subdivision, an active HOA could make such a request. All other requests would require a two-thirds petition of abutting property owners. With that, Commissioners, we're recommending option one based on your direction for us to take a look at this, but I should note that if, for any reason, the Board determines that this is not ready for primetime, just know that we've done the work on this item, and we could bring it back at any time that the Board wishes to consider it further. I have no speakers on this item. Mr. Chairman, we are, again, recommending option one, and we'll receive whatever the direction the Board determines appropriate.
Is there a motion for option number one?
Mr. Chairman, I have some question.
You have a motion?
No.
Or is there a motion for option one?
I have a motion.
What's your motion?
I move that we take option two. Would you not?
Second.
Option number two has been moved by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner O'Keefe, do you yield to Commissioner Proctor to speak?
I defer.
Commissioner Proctor?
What moves and brings this to the fore of our consideration? I've not, I don't live in, I mean, I don't live in, nor do I commission a golf cart-driving community from Thorpe Street down to Oak Ridge Road, so I don't think a lot of this would be impacted in my district, but I'm generally concerned with what's driving the train on this, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very simply, Commissioners, this comes at the request of the Board to consider such an ordinance, but as I mentioned, now that you've seen it and you understand a little bit better how it could work in the county, if, certainly if it's something that the Board's not interested in pursuing, certainly understand that and would be happy to receive whatever direction you have today.
Okay, Commissioners, I just say that this wouldn't have, I don't see this largely impacting my district. It may impact yours, but I see us making way for golf carts, and I'm not sure what, is it horsepower, how fast they go, that makes them required to have a tag? The off-wheel, real fast, strong bikes, four-wheel, those, do we make way for those? People on skateboards, do we make way and room for them? Horseback riders? I mean, there's a lot to think about, and I'm not, I don't see how this enhances public safety, but I can be persuaded, actually. I can be persuaded, but this is just not a big, a big, I've never received an ask from anyone in my district, so, but I will listen if, and currently I support option two, that we not go down this and destabilize safety, but if you all can persuade me, I can be persuaded with an argument. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Option number two has been moved by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Proctor. I have Commissioner Welch, Commissioner, well, actually, I have Commissioner O'Keefe next in queue. Commissioner?
Bingo.
Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Minor in queue to speak, and then Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for staff on this. Have we had, has staff been contacted by golf cart owners or neighborhoods looking to get a process?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner, yes, but I would have to say it's pretty infrequent.
Okay. And so, thank you. And so the reason for my motion on this is that, and again, I can be persuaded as always, is I don't understand the problem we are addressing. I'm a big fan of getting ahead of problems. However, we have to be, this will take staff time, this will take some resources, even if it's a limited amount, and I personally, at a time when we are forced to increase EMS fees and some other things, that we need to remember that if we are going to spend our resources, meaning staff time or anything, I want to be doing it addressing a key problem, and unless, unless I'm unaware of significant injuries and requests and neighborhood issues, this doesn't rise to that level where I think it's worth us making an ordinance for a problem that isn't likely to be a major issue now or in the future. We can always bring it back, but however, I may learn that this is a major issue, and I honestly got to say, I bet, you know, I bet people that have golf carts in neighborhoods are already driving them around, and I just don't know that it's our responsibility to spend our staff time getting in between that, with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pretty much am aligned with the sentiments of Commissioner Proctor. You know, I don't see a pressing need for us to engage in this right now. If at some point that changes, I'm certainly willing to be persuaded. With regard to our multi-use paths and our, you know, those types of, and sidewalks, I mean, we're undergoing a lot of, nationwide, we're in the midst of a big shift in terms of like how e-bikes are going to play a role in that, and so this is a moving target in terms of how we are going to share the road and share a multi-use pass in the future. So I suspect at some point this will come back, but at that moment, I think it's best for us to wait until that moment comes, and especially if there's not a pressing need from a neighborhood at this point. So I agree with Commissioner Proctor and will support Commissioner O'Keefe's motion for option two. Thank you.
Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree as well. I think that, and you know, in my district, there are probably more golf carts cruising around necessarily than other parts of the county, but I do kind of see this as a solution looking for a problem. I don't think that, I don't think that we need to regulate that at this point. I think that's probably best left to parents and common sense. And so I was going to say the same thing, that I support kind of pausing if it becomes an issue as we continue to see growth, perhaps like in Waloney in the future, and you see a lot of houses being built in a specific area, if a neighborhood really wants to, you know, I think Westminster Oaks is one of those neighborhoods that may want to like, you know, have some access to golf carts, and, you know, maybe we can address that at a later date, but I just think at this point, it just kind of is, you know, it's casual and, you know, I think there definitely are some safety concerns, and I've had students who had some accidents on golf carts in Summerbrook and places like that, but I think generally speaking, it's probably just better for parents and HOAs within themselves to kind of regulate that, and if it, you know, comes to us, comes back to us to regulate what's on the streets, then it becomes a whole bigger issue. So I'm going to support the motion on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cummings? Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask, maybe just get some clarification about where we are now in the county. county. I guess, Madam Attorney, we don't have an ordinance now, and so residents that are utilizing golf carts, it just, it's not illegal or unlawful, it's just unregulated. Am I correct?
Well, it is unregulated at the local level, however, it is regulated by state statute and under chapter 316.
Okay.
Which is the State Uniform Traffic Control Code. A golf cart may be operated only upon a county road designated as appropriate for use by golf carts and within the jurisdiction of said county. So, that's the current state of state law on the issue.
So, we have state law, and then the various jurisdictions are responsible for adopting local ordinance or implementing state law.
If they so desire within certain constraints. We are preempted in many areas related to golf carts, but we can adopt some regulations related to it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I know in my neighborhood, it's not a lot of golf carts, but we do have golf carts in the neighborhoods, and I know in some other neighborhoods, I think Commissioner Welch spoke about his neighborhood, so it's just pretty much unrelated, unregulated locally, but we do have state law that does the regulation.
Yes, and citizens should really be mindful and aware of the state regulations and making sure they're complying with that. Yes, ma'am.
That we are compliant. Thank you, thank you, Madam Attorney.
All right, so I got Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Welch in queue to speak, but my question is, it looks like we're all in agreement on this one. Is it substantive or something? Or do you want to change some things?
No, it was just, I think everything I have to say is substantive, Mr. Chairman, I really do.
I don't know about that, Commissioner Proctor. You battle a little. I'm just saying.
Unfortunately, my daughter has not thought that, you know, frequently.
All right, Chris Pro, what you got for us?
You know, thinking through golf cart, the word golf cart is, has become a political term of art which connotates, you've heard the term golf cart communities, the golf cart communities of Florida. They are frequented by particular candidates, they suggest a certain socioeconomic status, but political trends are frequently interpreted through what is the thought system of golf cart communities. I know I don't live in one of those, but it's very interesting that the very term golf cart community has a little political residue associated with that term. But what I wanted to ask was the status of these little scooters that, of the evening, it was the most dangerous of dangerous things. One young person there at Madison Street at Monroe, it was three of them. One, I almost said jetted, but the little scooter's not that fast coming across Monroe at night, and was waiting for the other young person to come across, and like, I dare you to come across. And there was a third person who was there around about Adam Street, and number two person was waiting on the guy at Adam Street to come on, and nighttime, no reflectors, no light, and we, it could have really been ugly. And I don't know, and I guess the city commission has something to do with those little carts, those little thingies that you stand up and you, people just leave them on the ground and just walk off and leave them. They scattered everywhere. It was almost like debris scattered. I'm not satisfied with, but I guess that's for the children and the collegiate crowd or the young folk. The golf carts typically are for senior groups and so forth, but I appreciate this commission of putting brakes on our staff's willingness to have us to venture down this lane, and, but for us to pull up, and we got a lot of things with student populations, bicycles across campuses, these little scooter thingies, we got a lot going on tell us, y'all. And I know that Commissioner Caban, if you're thinking about Thorpe Street, I brought the word up, he would much prefer a focus on sidewalks, I'm sure, and I couldn't even imagine where a golf cart would go on Thorpe Street, west of Goddard. I couldn't imagine. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought that was weighted. Did you?
It was, that was heavy stuff.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, seven zero, item number nineteen, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Item number nineteen seeks the board ratification of actions taken at your June budget workshop. Commissioners, based on your policy direction provided at the workshop, the item establishes the preliminary balanced budget for the next fiscal year. Subsequent to the workshop, we did receive final property values from the property praiser. The increase in value results in additional property tax collection, and as reflected in this item, we're recommending using that additional property tax collection to reduce the use of fund balance for next year. Other than that, commissioners, everything mirrors the actions that you took at your most recent workshop. Your next steps, commissioners, in the budget process would be to conduct your final public hearings in September, and with that, let me turn to the county attorney for some required disclosures or recuses.
Madam Attorney?
And, Mr. Chair, if you would recognize Commissioner Minor.
Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Madam County Attorney. I'd like to make a motion for options one through seventeen, but with one important exception. Whole Child Leon and my wife Jessica Low Minor have entered into a consulting contract for her to provide marketing, communications, and board engagement services to Whole Child Leon. It's been represented to me by Whole Child Leon that none of these funds provided by Leon County will be earmarked for my wife's contract services. Nevertheless, I will need to recuse myself from voting on the Whole Child Leon budget item based on the conflict pursuant to section 112.3143 Florida statutes. So, I'd like to move for the board to bifurcate option one, extracting the line item of $38,000 to Whole Child Leon into a separate motion. By doing this, I will be permitted to vote on the other items in the fiscal year '24 budget. So, my motion is to take options one through seventeen, but extracting out the Whole Child Leon line item, to which I will vote on the, on the initial motion of one to seventeen with that amendment, and then the rest of the board would be free to do as they wish on that other motion. Is that consistent with what we talked about, Ms. Madam County Attorney?
It is.
Motion made by Commissioner Minor, second by the vice chair. Since we're in that same vein, we had a long conversation about if there were any reasons for me to recuse during this item. Madam Attorney, just wanted to confirm to you on the record that there is not.
That's correct.
Thank you. All those in favor of items?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I have Commissioner Proctor in queue to speak. Commissioner Proctor?
Chairman, no desire to attempt to suck all the air out of the room, but we've met on this previously at our budget workshop, and of course, you know, it's never real until it gets in this form, so here we are in, not a workshop, but our official county meeting.
Yes, sir.
And I wanted to say again how very pleased I am, how commissioners worked this year, our struggle collectively to fashion this particular budget is probably one that I'm most pleased with down through the years. We have added, I'm very proud, Commissioner Minor, of how wholeheartedly we embrace item nine, and that is that for the second year, we will give our, our employees a 5% across the board increase, as well as to our constitutional officers, and in these times of raging economic wildfire burning everywhere, this was the right thing to do, and I'm very pleased. Also, the emphases of item three, what we have for supporting, I'm very excited, this is a small appropriation, but for what we might do to achieve community balance and spirit of pride next year with our bicentennial really excites me, and every time I look at number three, we've been through it, but today is, you know, we say I do, and it's not just an engagement, you know, budget workshop, it's just, you know, we're talking about engagement. When you bring it to this meeting here, you're talking about I do, you're jumping over a broom, and it just occurs to me, and I need to admit my dullness of mind, to note that what staff has done in item five is to stagger the increased waste management, and I had not perceived that. We're not just jumping straight to the 22 mark, but we're going to 18 this year goes into effect, and then next year, we incrementally. So, I really want to thank you, Vince, that we did not suddenly put, put all of that. That was a great move that you did for, and I didn't perceive it, I didn't capture it previously. So, overall, with all of the dynamics at play, our staff showed up, showed out, this commission, we, we went back, we went and forth, and I think that we've achieved something here that in the years to come, we maintain, 15, we maintain that mileage rate in a gann. It doesn't seem like a lot to folk who don't do this business, but to keep that mileage rate sealed for 12 years successively is just amazing. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for affording me to get that off of my chest, and it's just all pride, but I do say that Commissioner, Commissioner O'Keefe's comments to us, I still agree with, they were quite poignant, and that is that we at some point recognize that the largest growth area in our overall total budget is with the sheriff, and that we, in coming years, knowing what projections are over the next five, he has wisely said to us, do we not deserve to understand and get some teaspoon feeding as to why criminal justice is required in projecting such growing demand for the county, the county's budget? So, I accede to his admonition and receive that, and I do join him in his thoughts that we owe our community consideration and begin to look and to hold accountable all of this money that's heading in the direction of the sheriff. Those things being said, it's with pride this year, much pride of the work of these people's money, that we are privileged, God grants us the privilege of making decisions over, and it's with a very special feeling that God expects, the people expect, and I don't think that we've disappointed the expectations of either God nor man. For that reason, I'll be supporting our budget this year.
Thank you. All those in motion on the floor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries objection. Now, for the piece that Commissioner Minor pulled out, is there a motion for approval of such?
Some of.
Moved by Commissioner Proctor, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by the vice chair. Do you understand the motion that's on the floor? Madam Attorney and clerk? We're good? All right. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero one with Commissioner Minor and recusal. Do we have any more items, Mr. Chair? I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Mr. Administrator.
That concludes your general business, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Commissioners, it's 4:30, you want to go ahead and go through, Commissioner, discussion time? All right, we'll start with our attorney. Madam Attorney, you have anything for us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I have two matters as directed, as authorized by the board at the last meeting. We did send a C, send a C's letter to the Florida PACE Funding Agency because they are operating in Leon County in derogation and without compliance with Board Resolution Number 22-43, which was the basis for the board to authorize FPFA to operate here, subject to heightened consumer protection provisions and additional requirements and limitations. We did receive a response back from FPFA in a letter dated June 30th that we received on July 7th, in which FPFA basically reiterated its position that it has authority to act autonomously and without any regulation or jurisdiction of Leon County, and it continues to provide a PACE program, and it, or its representative file assessment liens for collection on the tax roll in Leon County. With that in mind, and given the position that FPFA has expressly taken with Leon County, I do have a couple of recommendations for the board, one of which is to repeal Resolution Number 22-43, which the board adopted last year at its September meeting, in which did authorize FPFA to operate a PACE program here in Leon County, subject to those heightened consumer protections and restrictions and limitations, because they've simply indicated that they're not going to comply with the resolution. That is a recommendation I have for the board. Additionally, I would recommend that the board adopt a resolution, basically to address, next steps will be litigation, and that is what the board authorized at the last meeting to protect the interests of Leon County and its citizens and its home rule power. But with that in mind, there is a provision of the statutes, and it's basically a chapter, chapter 164, and it's commonly known by some as the Florida Governmental Conflict Resolution Act, okay? And what this act provides is that if two governmental entities, as defined in the chapter, have a conflict of any sort of dispute and litigation is filed, one of those parties can trigger and request that the court stay the litigation and basically force the two entities to engage in this alternative dispute resolution process, okay? It can require mediation. At some point, it could require a joint meeting of the FPFA board and this body. I would recommend this resolution in the context of what I just told you for two reasons. I think they would try to assert that we are, they would try to compel us to engage in that alternative dispute resolution process once we file litigation. I think it's, and I would contend that given the fact that they've asserted statewide jurisdiction, that act does not apply to them, that they do not meet the definition of a governmental entity in that act, but even if they do, the act provides that no such process is required as a prerequisite to litigation, as long as this board by a three-fourths vote determines that there's a danger to the public health, safety, or welfare, and that for that reason, that it does not need to proceed with this process prior to proceeding with litigation. Now, I just want to, for the record, go through a couple of findings with you related to this issue, okay? Now, chapter, or section 163.08 creates the framework for the administration of these PACE programs, okay? And this, according to this framework, property owners enter entities financing agreements to obtain specified qualifying improvements that are paid for the, through the levy of non-advalorem assessments on their property tax bills, okay? This is the method of collection, and this is very unique under Florida law, that these can be placed on their tax bills. It also expressly provides that such statute is additional and supplemental to county and municipal home rule authority and not in derogation or limitation on such authority, which we assert is further basis to litigate this issue and take the position that we do not authorize or recognize FPFA's authority to act here. And just to go back, on November 9th, the board adopted its initial resolution authorizing FPFA to operate here. Subsequent to that, they requested some clarifications about how some of the requirements Subsequent to that, they requested some clarifications about how some of the requirements applied to them in the residential PACE context, not commercial PACE, and a couple of other minor tweaks. We did that. That was the board, that was the resolution that the board adopted last year. That's Resolution Number 22 dash 43. Okay? At the time that the board or staff was finalizing that resolution to bring to the board at September, we received a commitment from FPFA's legal counsel that they had no issue with the terms of that resolution. They then subsequently, and before the board adopted the resolution in mid-September, filed their bond validation proceeding on September 1st of last year. They provided no notice to the county that they were taking this position or asserting this unilateral authority in this bond validation proceeding. The board acted in good faith, passed the resolution, and were only informed by letter received in January of this year that they said, well, thanks, but no thanks. We don't need your resolution, and we're not subject to your authority anymore. We've investigated this issue. I brought this issue back to the board. I do want to let you know that as of yesterday, 14 liens have been filed in Leon County for some of these improvements, which include things like heat pumps, air conditioning units, and roofs. I've talked with some of you individually about some of these. Most of these, they are charging in these financing agreements at least 8.99% interest. They are placing liens on these properties for at least 15, sometimes 20 or 30 years. And the practical effect of this is it is increasing these people's tax bills by at least 50%, but in a number of cases, at least doubling their tax bill. And they are going to be responsible for paying these for as long as that lien is outstanding, for that 15 or 20 or 30-year period, for a heat pump, or a roof, or an air conditioner that may meet its useful life before they pay off that assessment. And the amount, when you calculate it, that they will pay overall because of the interest rate far exceeds the value, the present-time value of any of those improvements. For these reasons, I would recommend that the board adopt a resolution finding that the continued operation of FPFA, not in compliance with Resolution 22 dash 43, or recognizing the authority of Leon County to regulate its operations in this county constitutes a danger to the public health, safety, or welfare. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. If you would like to think more about this and not act on these recommendations now and think about them over the break and take this up after the public hearings, that's, that's fine too.
All right. Is there a motion for the county attorney's recommendation?
Motion of both actions to rescind Resolution 42 dash 43.
22 dash 43. 22 dash 43. Yes.
Motion made by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Minor. I have no commissioners in queue to speak. I believe that was pretty descriptive. Commissioner O'Keefe, you want to speak? Okay. Commissioner O'Keefe?
I just want to thank county attorney. For the folks listening at home, there's been a lot that's watching. There's been a lot going into this. And I just want to say how much I appreciate our county attorney staying on top of this, an issue that is not in the news, but is seriously affecting our citizens and advocating for our citizens' consumer rights. Thank you.
All right. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, well, I thank the county attorney for sending us the handout. Well, we could, you know, read the specifics on this issue, but I just have a question as far as the property owners. Do they have a recourse at all with the liens?
I can't answer that question. Again, the thing that is unique about this program and the method of collection is the only method of collection that's currently available to these PACE program financing companies is on the tax roll. And if there's something in the financing agreements that lets them pay it off in advance or something like that, I don't know. But I don't think that, given the statute and the authority they have to place it on the tax roll, that they have to even offer that. I would also tell you, and this is something that came through right after the meeting started. I did receive, I was, received a forward of a letter from our tax collector, Doris Malloy, to FPFA dated today. She had, based on an understanding on her part, that the county had basically entered into an interlocal agreement with FPFA for it to provide a PACE program, entered into the tax collector's agreement with FPFA to collect the assessment on the tax roll. The letter that FP, that tax collector Malloy has sent to FPFA, or it's in transit, I would assume, basically states that that agreement is void ab initio, and she has no authority to collect those assessments on the tax roll absent an agreement between FPFA and Leon County. And that is the position that the tax collector has taken on that issue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, madam, our county attorney for that explanation. And, you know, given that, I certainly support Commissioner O'Keefe's motion.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Any objections to the motion on the floor? Seeing none, show the action as approved. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Anything else for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one more thing for the board. It is with great sadness that I do want to let the board know that Deputy County Attorney LaShawn Riggins has tendered her resignation. We are losing her to the private sector. She will be here for another two weeks. She is an integral member of the county attorney office and team. She will be missed, and we will be moving to replace her expeditiously, of course. But I did want to let the board know that she will be leaving the county family.
Thank you. Thank you for, for the notice. She has been a part of our organization for a while now and done great work for us. Thank you so much. All right. Anything else?
Chair, thank you.
Mr. Administrator, anything for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I have no additional items. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and start us off. I need a proclamation for greater blessing, tabernacle, praise in their celebration of 17 years. Is there a motion to that effect?
Support.
Move by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by the vice chair. Any objection? Seeing none, show it as approved unanimously. Since he is participating by phone, so I won't forget him, I'm going to ask that Commissioner Caban go first. Commissioner Caban, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I'm excited to share this platform and desk with you. I wanted to ask the tourist development council, will we, our board have two appointments in October? Mr. Administrator, I've been looking at this for a period. We got scheduled for two appointments, October 31st. City Commission has two commissioners on the tourist development. County Commission has but one. It's our entity. We put money in that. And I didn't understand why the city has two representatives and we have but one. And I'm wondering if we're trying to rectify that by appointing a second county commissioner. And I've said to you all that there's no disadvantage by the city having two commissioners and we having only but one. When I'm that one, there's no problem. But numerically, just for the even stevenness of it, will we be getting a second county commissioner in October?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the city represent, representation by city commissioners is dictated by Florida statutes. And whether the board has the discretion to add additional commissioners to the TDC, if that's a motion of the board, we'd be happy to bring that back to the board in the form of an agenda item to explore that and provide any options that you may wish to consider.
It's on, it's on agenda page 11, and it's been there for a couple of meetings, and I failed to mention it before. But I do believe that the great county of Leon going into our 200th year is equal to the city, which is going into their 200th year. And after 200 years, the county at some point ought to catch up. Mr. Bob, we ought to be, have equal representation on tourist development. And that's my thought. It's just.
Is there a motion?
Throws me wrong.
Is there a motion?
I move that we would place a second county commissioner on the tourist development council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Caban. Madam Vice Chair, do you want to speak to that, or are you good with the motion on the floor? Good with the motion on the floor. I see no other speakers in line to speak. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. So you'd be bringing the agenda item back to us? Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I want to shout out to our staff. The Amazon information session, which we saw pictures placed on screen, was really tremendous. And Mr. Keith, our O E V director, Bowers, was there and his team. And I don't know if you all got a chance to come down to the BL Perry Library. And the picture that's shown on screen in no way captures the energy, the number of people. And there were sessions that people were brought into the main library, sat there, and they ushered them in and did the little spill 15, 20 minutes and another round. And it happened all day long. Ray Shell was down there for a long period. I went down there, was totally impressed. And I wanted to thank our staff for, I know that we, I think we've been told that there's going to be a ribbon-cutting or tour of that building. I'm not sure if we'll be out. We have reconvened in September. By then, I don't know the date. I know something's supposed to happen. And we're looking forward to seeing this outstanding addition for economic generation, regeneration of our community. I'm asking for a support resolution for our county to apply for grants that have been established by executive order for President Biden. There's $240 billion that has been designated for America's underserved communities. And I shared with staff last week, at the meeting with Representative, Representative Department of Energy. And we have all of our, I believe, 42 agencies of federal government have various bullets of which neighborhoods can qualify. And under sustainability, which we have a sustainability unit, if we mirror the draft resolution, which I shared with county administration, we would then thus be qualified to make application for grant dollars in $240 billion. As of today, my understanding, as of this morning, and chatting again, with only 100, I mean, I don't mean that small money, to say only $100 million has been distributed. That's, that's really, don't sound too nice. But of $240 billion to be shared, the distribution of the money on the streets is slow. And that's why advocates have been hired and retained, who are traveling across the nation to, that we would pick up the application that this money can get on the streets. Looking at the Alice Report, us knowing that we have 32304, 32305, and a couple others, we is primetime what the federal government is trying to get this money. So I ask Commissioners, and Mr. Long, do you want to add anything to that? Asking for a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Commissioner Proctor has described it perfectly. We are, however, already qualified, but the resolution doesn't hurt.
So I like the agenda. I make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any objection? Seeing none, show it as approved.
Thank you. Commissioners, I share with you a proposed proclamation of Leon County Board of Commissioners' support of democracy. It notably, the content speaks for itself. It's, as we go into our 200th year, a bicentennial. And with many different looks and perspectives about equal protection of law, we're in a weird period. And it's my hope that I have proposed for us, for the record, approaching the 200th year anniversary of Leon County, Florida, we as the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, affirm our keen regard and high respect for the ideals of American democracy. And it goes on with the rest of it. I'd like to make a motion that we bring this back for formal adoption that lines what we stand for, our heartfelt support of American democracy. We get that chance to make that statement in a time such as this. My motion.
Is there a second? Seconded by the vice chair in discussion. Commissioner, there was a line there. Could you kind of simplify the motion for me?
Motion to approve our support of democracy in America as a Board of County Commissioners of Leon County.
Yes, agenda item. Yes. All right. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Proctor?
Okay. I believe this is my final lead. Commissioners, I may have failed in previous meetings, but I wanted to make a declaration of it now that we would consider our support for the Summer Youth Expo of 2024. And I've received a, an official Donald L. Tucker Center workup of a bill of about $13,326 as our support for next year's Summer Youth Expo 2024, which would be held at the Leon County Civic Center. And I'm not totally clear on, on an approach to this, but our contribution among the sponsors of this event for next spring, we would take leadership and pay for the site of the civic center. I'm not sure if that ought to be agendaed. Is it just FYI? At some point, we'll bring this up as an ask. Mr. Chairman, how would you direct me, sir?
Agenda item, please, sir.
Okay. A motion agenda item for children's services, Summer Youth Expo, that Leon County would pay for the civic center as that meeting site for children all around communities to come to that central location.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion has been seconded. Any objection? Seeing none, show it as approved. Commissioner Proctor?
Yes, sir.
I've received notice from Pastor Christie Griffin in reference to the Schools for Shoes, Shoes for Schools program that he does every year, and request for the county to sponsor. I would like for that to be a full board consideration. Is that something that you'd be willing to ask for as an agenda item?
Yes, sir, but Shoes for School is going to happen next month.
Yes, sir.
And we won't be back until September.
That's, that's very true. I'll tell you that.
Does the county attorney advise us on a waiver? What do we do?
Well, actually, in order for us to fund it today, it would have to be an amount, it would have to be unanimous vote. In order for us to fund it today for a motion to pass, correct, Madam County Attorney?
That is correct.
Okay.
Out of contingency.
Okay.
And what my recommendation would be is that, if I had one, is that we recommend, I would recommend an amount of maybe $1,000 for contingency.
How much?
$1,000.
That's what he asked you for? I mean, what was his amount? What does he need? Did he put that out there? Because I was at the ball, the tennis ball, which was three, four Fridays ago, which they had at the civic center. And Commissioners, what this is, Pastor Griffin, Rocky Hannah gave perhaps the most moving speech I've ever heard from him. And he talked about the unwillingness of children. And he talked about the unwillingness of children to want to go to school because they lack certain shoes or clothes, or, and how that inhibited and made many of them undesiring of going to school. And if there is anything that we can do to take children from 32304 and other ZIPS to not feel lacking, that they ain't got something not equal to other children, that's what Pastor Griffin, his work has been in the last several years. So that tennis shoes event is to put, make every kid feel okay about themselves. So I've personally supported it, tended that ball, and everyone, lots of folks, there, it was amazing. And I would make a motion, but I think $1,000.
Before you say, Commissioner, oh, sorry, Mr. Administrator, what do we have? Our, our Allen, what do we have in contingency?
We have $130,000.
Okay. Commissioner Proctor, what's your pleasure?
What did he ask for? What did he say?
We have $130,000.
We have $130,000.
He asked, I mean, he, he has asked the city, I don't know exactly how much the city gave, I, he didn't necessarily, I, I think, as I'm remembering it, $1,500 was about it. I think so.
That's what he wants?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, I move that we take a heartfelt unanimous vote in support of $1,500 for Pastor Quincy Griffin's request for the community-wide support of children in the Shoes to School effort that he's hosting in August. Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Caban. Commissioner Cummings.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I certainly appreciate you raising this Shoes for School. Pastor Griffin, in his church, does this every year.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's a phenomenal event. You walk into Civic Center with your children, your child, and you tell them what size, what grade, and it's just so organized. They have the shoes with the various sizes. I mean, and it's, it's thousands of shoes. I'm serious. It, it, it's just phenomenal. And while I, I don't oppose Commissioner Proctor's motion, I, I don't know. I would like to offer an amended motion for us to contribute $5,000 to this effort. Because what it, what's targeted is those children in those zip codes that will not have new shoes for school. Parents cannot afford it. We have hundreds and hundreds, probably thousands of children that attend, that attend this event. And these are not used shoes. These are new, brand new shoes. And, and I, I just believe that if we are serious about supporting our children, giving them some self-esteem, giving them some encouragement, when they go back to school, Mr. County Administrator, I would like to us, for us to be a lot more supportive of that effort. And it's just my, my opinion, and I'd like to offer, there's a substitute motion.
Tell you what, before you offer that substitute, would you be willing to ask, do you want a substitute? Do you want to ask Commissioner Proctor to amend his motion?
Okay.
It's up to you. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair.
If, if Commissioner Proctor is.
I can withdraw my motion and let Commissioner Cummings lead the charge on this.
All right. Motion on the floor for $5,000 for contingency to go to the Schools for Shoes sponsorship.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Proctor. I have Commissioner Minor and Commissioner O'Keefe, and Q to speak. Thank you for your motion, Commissioner Vice Chair.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you.
But I want to, I want to point out how this is, this is against the process that we normally have for, for, for providing support to nonprofits.
Understood.
That have incredibly good, important needs for the community. I, I'm not going to vote against Shoes for Schools. I'm just, I'm not going to do it. And I'm not going to vote against Pastor Griffin. But, but I want to point out that there's a CHSP process where, where nonprofits apply through a rigorous process, where they have to be, you know, they go through a, a whole bunch of evaluations to make sure that the money that they spend is, is going to be dedicated to what they're saying is going to be spent for. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying anything against Pastor Griffin or, or the program, but we have a process for that. And so I'm going to vote for this motion because I think it's a good cause. I, I, I think it's, we, there's no way for us to go ahead and fund this in September after the event has taken place.
Right.
But I want to point out to everybody that we, we really need to, we can't let this be the, the opening the lid on Pandora's box.
Understood.
We have to follow the process for CHSP going forward. And I, I encourage Pastor Griffin to, to apply to CHSP for funding for this program for subsequent years. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I also encourage CSC, if they are not, have not gotten involved, to really strongly consider, as this is, if it rather be sponsorship or grant, this is a good program.
And I, I just, to, to the concerns of Commissioner Minor, it's, it's the but for situation. And that's, this would go through the process. This Griffin would recognize it. It's just that he didn't know that we would not be able to process it and put it on the agenda in the absence of his being clear that we would be out next month and would not be able to vote this. And so it's our own limit, limitations that we are utilizing this effort to, which is an extreme one because it requires unanimous. Very little requires unanimous.
Commissioner O'Keefe, here we will go to a vote.
Thank you. I absolutely support this. You know, $5,000, it, it's one of these things where, yes, we have a process, but school starts. And if we can, you know, if we can spend $7,000 putting someone's name on a building, we can spend $5,000 putting shoes on kids' feet. My dad will never let me, I'll never forget my dad that they were so poor there, local, way back when, the local clothes store donated them school clothes at the beginning of the year, and that was it. When I was growing up, we were also poor, not that poor. And we, I doubt kids call them bobos now, but back when I was a kid, that was what you called payless shoes that we went to school in. And it may not be something that you look at it and say, oh, my gosh, this is food, or, or something like that, but, you know, it's little in the context of our budget. And if it's something that makes it just a little bit easier for someone to go to school and pay attention, not worry about getting picked on or anything like that, it's definitely worth it.
So let me, let me make clarification here, too. Y'all do understand that this is not giving to a program, this is sponsorship of an event. So, so, because we do have a, we have, we have ordinance that says if you can apply for CHSP, then we can't fund you. But if there is an event, meaning like Schools for Shoes, or let's say like we, we sponsored, you know, the, um, um, different events that people have had throughout, the I Am The Dream Gala and things like that, right? So we can sponsor events, right? But then that, so that, that, that process is different what we're talking about versus, you know what I'm saying? So this is actually for the sponsorship of an event, not to actually, you know, give to an ongoing program. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right. So all those in favor of the motion on the floor, which is again, to get $5,000 for contingency to the Schools for Shoes and sponsorship of the program, and this has to be unanimous vote in order for it to actually be granted. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you so much, Commissioner Proctor. Thank you to the whole commission. I do believe this is a worthy cause. Those kids, these will provide shoes for kids that, that, again, might have been going to school with no shoes or, or not at least a good pair of shoes. So thank you so much for your consideration. And I'm sure Pastor Griffin and his folks really think this as well. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor.
Yes, sir. Finally, Mr. Chairman, I invite you to the community kickoff, supporting family athletics for '23, '24 at the Fairground Thursday, August 17th. It's going to be good. And I wouldn't be late. And don't hesitate. And I'm trying to think of something else. So I hope you all come, wishing you all a pleasant break. Look forward to seeing you on the 17th. And you may not see me in Texas, it's a little hot out there this year, but have a great time.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Proctor. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one thing, if you guys recall, last year Caitlin Irwin came to us and with her Be Bold, Go Gold campaign for pediatric cancer, she raised a whole bunch of money. That's kicking off in September again, so I would like to ask for a proclamation recognizing September 30th, 2023 as Go Gold Day in Leon County.
Support, second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Wells, seconded by Commissioner Proctor. Any objection? Seeing none, show it as passed unanimously.
That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, for a moment, I thought we were back on the agenda. I didn't realize we were still in Commissioner Proctor's comments, but it's good to know we're back in this. Real quick, we are, Leon County is in the middle of its five-week summer internship program. And I think some of them leave at five, so I know we have seven county commissioner interns, and I'd just like to recognize them and have them stand up for any of those who are still in the audience. And I did not tell them ahead of time for this. And just something that's great to highlight, that's a paid internship program, and it's, it's been a great experience for me so far, but, you know, it's for the interns. So that was all for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Christian O'Keefe, you kind of stole some of my talking points here. I was going to introduce my, my interns for the District III office, and if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and I'll do that, actually. If you can have a District III folk stand up. These are three great, great young people. You've got William Merricks, who's starting at Florida State University this fall. You've got William Muniz, who's starting the senior year at high school, and then Charlotte Stewart-Tilly, who's also starting at FSU this fall. So these are amazing. They're all, they're all incredible, right? For me, I mean, I had internships in between my, my summers at college, and it really kind of opened the world. You know, we all do busboy work and that type of stuff before, but, but it wasn't until I really had those internships in between college semesters that really kind of opened my eyes to the, a big part of the world in terms of just work and different, different ways of pursuing careers. So just a really big fan of internships, and, and hopefully the one that you guys are having here is, is worthwhile, too. So, but thanks for everything, not just the three for District III, but for all of you for being here. I think it's a really important process or service that we can offer to help introduce you guys to some of our local government. So, thanks very much. And then everybody else, have a great summer and stay cool. Be covered.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Reverend Ernest Lane and the Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church are creating a scholarship, academic scholarship, in the name of one of our unsung civil rights heroes, Mrs. Mary Stille, S.T.I.L.L. And I'd like to move for a proclamation in reference to naming of that scholarship and have it presented to them on August the 27th is when they're going to have the, the grand announcement and have it presented to them at that particular time at the church.
All right. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any objection? Seeing none, show it as approved. Madam Vice Chair.
And just lastly, it's a sort of personal, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to just thank all my fellow commissioners, county administrator, county attorney, all the county staff, Lord, for all the love and support that you all showed to me last month on the death of my, of my mother. It was, I'm sure we've all experienced that if we've lost a mother, but just having the support of all of you all coming by, visiting, calling, attending her service, it just really, really meant a lot. So ask you to please continue to pray for me, but I just love all of you all and just, just thank you so much for all the love and support.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right. That's all I have for commission discussion time. We'll break now until 6 o'clock. Thank you so much.